I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Elson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
..............................................................................................................................................................................
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in city council meeting held on January 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of account for the week of January 13th through the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is proclamations and commendations. We have none, so we'll move to item eight, unfinished business. Item eight A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 611 Polk Street in District Two. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on December the 20th. There is a recommendation from the building official to adopt the resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, Mr. Harbison, I'm going to ask that we table this again. I went and looked at this property and being that we're having community meetings this week, today and tomorrow, I just want to talk to some people in the community. So I'm asking for a table, another table for 30 days.
All right, we have a table for 30 in a second. Clerk, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for an additional 30 days.
Item nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1019 Gardner Street in District Three, Janice Butler being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Yes ma'am, okay. If you would please come to the podium over here. Ma'am, if you will please state your name and your address for the record.
Janice Butler, 1011 Dracrate Lane, Gaston, Alabama.
Thank you. So you're speaking in opposition of the resolution?
Well, no, I'm not speaking into about tearing it down, just more time.
Ms. Butler, if I may ask, I was gonna, that was my desire anyway, after looking over the facility with Mr. Harbison there. How much time do you need?
I have half the money. I've talked to a man about tearing it down.
Okay.
And it was gonna get torn down before the notice was put on it.
Okay.
But we're having to save money and I've got half of it, what he's asking. I just need a little more time.
And you're needing the time to, for the money to tear it down yourself?
Right, no. The man is, I got him, I found him on Andrew's List and he gave me an estimate, but I don't have, I have half of what he's asking for.
Gotcha.
And it's gonna take me a little more time to save it up.
Okay, so you want to rehab the home, right?
Right.
To save it. Okay, perfect. All right, I'm with you on that.
Okay.
All right, you're gonna, somebody has to speak in favor, so. Right, yeah, and so what I was gonna say, and it's probably gonna be said anyway, but I'll go ahead and say it. After the meeting, get with Mr. Harbison, okay, so that he can instruct you on exactly, the gentleman sitting right next to you. He will instruct you on what you need to do, okay?
All right.
That was my desire is to see if it was a possibility, if it could be saved, right? And so you'll need to get with him and he'll explain everything that you need along with the financials that you are already working towards. And let's see if we can get those done in a timeframe that is suitable for everyone, all right?
All right, I've never been to a meeting, so I didn't know.
That's fine.
Sure.
You did great.
You did well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes ma'am, all right. Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case was filed in February of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. This situation is that the property is Zone B2 general business, so as far as this house remaining a house, it's non-conforming in nature. Once that property falls in disrepair and is recorded as condemned by the city, which that is the case, then the only use for that structure moving forward will be something that's acceptable in a B2 general business district. So the owner needs to understand that it cannot be repaired for single-family dwelling moving forward. We don't have a problem with them bringing it up to code for a business, something that would be allowed in a B2, but that's just where it is. That's the nature of the business. Our recommendation is pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harbison. So I was unaware that was in a B2 to me, that changes or adds to the complexities of the situation. Ms. Butler, do you understand what Mr. Harbison was saying? Okay, I would suggest that we'll, I mean, we're gonna go, we're gonna do what Councilman Avery would probably like to do, but you need to understand, it probably needs to be in a, in a meeting with Mr. Harbison, that it, I guess the house originally was a home and that property is now in a business-type district where a home is not permitted. And so if you ref, if you fix the house and it's now become habitable and is within the ordinance of the city, then no one can live there. It has to be a business. Is that right, Mr. Harbison? Am I saying that correct?
Yeah, I'm not normally living there, but there is a house that is always being living in.
Oh, okay.
It's an existing, they've, they've been living there, but if it gets into.
Right, the house next door is non-conforming as well, but as long as it's occupied and maintained in a habitable fashion, then it is allowed to continue. But when nonconformity becomes disrepair, and in this case condemned, then you have one option, and that's to repair it to the zone which it's located in, that's general business. Thank you.
Well, Brian, just real quick for further clarification for me, just in general, if that home that's adjacent, or if that property that's adjacent that's currently being occupied as a residential property, that property could never change hands again as a residential.
No, no.
In other words, once those people leave, it goes to a B2 and that's enforced.
No, it's still not, it's still B2 and it's non-conforming, but as long as it's maintained as a dwelling satisfactorily, then it can continue to be used as a dwelling. But if it ever becomes in disrepair and condemned in this case, then nonconformity overrides what it was originally built for.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and, and, what is her name, Butler?
Yeah, Ms. Butler.
Ms. Butler. Also, we discussed this in our district meetings, so I'll, before you leave also, we have another district meeting coming up and Mr. Harbison is gonna come back and those were some of the highlights that we hit it in the meeting for the, for the public to understand and know these things, okay, concerning what's going on. But I think this will be, being that you're not occupying the home, I think this would also be a benefit for you in a manner that you'll, once you talk to Mr. Harbison and get the details and understanding of it, this still could be a benefit for you, okay?
Okay, I will let it be carried down anywhere else. It's that one.
Okay, understood, okay.
I just wanted to ask a question, clarification. So if she reveals or redoes what she needs to do, it has to be done by business code?
Right, if she's going to repair this structure, then it would have to comply with a general business use.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harbison, and thank you, Ms. Butler, for being here. All right, at this point, what is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I'm gonna ask for a table of 30 days on this.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Councilman Smith, all right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item 10, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 2323 Forest Avenue in District Six, Michael Head being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Head, live in Gaston. On that one, we're finishing up a project in Walnut Park. Soon as we get through that, probably another week or so, we'd like to move over to this. So I'm asking for a little more time.
Okay, all right. Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in February of last year. There was a building permit taken out March the 21st.
Goodness.
There was a little bit of work done, but as you can see in the pictures, the house is still unsecure, there's trash thrown about the property. There have been no improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to be passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harbison. What is the, I'm sorry.
Last question.
Yes, you can.
Mr. Head.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you ensure us that you will at least get the exterior cleaned up and then you can work on the interior and exterior of the building?
And that's all from our homeless population, all the trash in the yard, whatever they, anyway.
Right. Right, okay. Then I would like to entertain a motion to table for 30 days.
Okay. That requires a second. Second.
Second.
Yes, a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
All right. Item 11, our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 2325 Forest Avenue in District Six, Michael Head being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Michael Head, Gaston again. That's the house next door and I'm asking for the same thing on it. We'll just work on both houses at the same time.
Question, Mr. Head.
Yes, ma'am.
This one appears to be in much worse shape than your, your 2323. Can you?
It's savable, yes ma'am. It is.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Harbison.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor? I'm sorry, Mr. Harbison.
Mr. President, we also filed this case in February of last year. There have been no improvements. There was a permit taken out in March, we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Okay, I'll make a motion to entertain the table for 30 days.
Okay. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item 12 is a resolution awarding bid number 3492 for all hazards certified NOAA, NOAA weather radios. The purchasing department has recommended the bid be awarded to Midland Radio Corporation. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution selecting council member for planning commission. A member of the city council is authorized to serve as a member ex officio of the planning commission. This resolution selects Chris Robinson for a term ending on November the 2nd, 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I got a problem. I'm just kidding.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is authorizing agreements with Avenue Insights and Analytics LLC. This relates to four agreements for the collection and administration of sales and use tax, rental tax, lodging tax, and for business license discovery recovery services. The term is for three years. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 15 is new business, seeing none. We'll move to item 16, department reports, committees, boards, et cetera. Do I see Mr. Tanner back there? Is there any update that you need to provide us this morning, Josh? Man, that's good news.
I know, it's a good way.
Yeah, we have. Well, thank you for all the work that you and your team have done at Edwall, at the EMA, and we can't do it without you. Appreciate the help that you're directing toward Selma and, but taking care of us here at home first. Anyone else, any other departments? All right. Item 17, remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor Ford, would you like to go first?
Yeah, Mr. President, do you mind if I do my two comment day? I was working on a notice.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, by all means, please do.
I did not mean to keep y'all waiting.
Okay.
Real quick on the remarks, we're kicking off the comprehensive planning process this week and there'll be contact in each council member and department heads. We've asked the directors to submit requests for public projects and needs through the legislative delegation for funding at our yesterday's department head meeting. Our finance director position was posted and closed and will be filling soon. Our EMA director is retiring also Deborah Gaither. They are also in the process of moving back to City Hall to alleviate the rent of $6,600 some odd dollars that we're paying to the county. In February 7th to the 9th, with our advocate that we hired, Jason, with former Congressman at our Hope's office, myself, Brett Johnson, and David Hooks are flying up to DC to make some visits with some senators and congressmen, hopefully to secure some funding. We also have several industrial prospects knocking on our door. Before I say these commendations, I was on the phone with somebody and they were a little aggravated that we went into executive session. I'll just let it be known for the record, I hope we go into executive session every week when it has to do with something good happening for Gaston, so I want, there's a new day in Gaston and we're defining our narrative and we got a lot of good things, I promise you, that's working. And I want to thank our staff and the department heads for everything. And if I could present these.
You sure can, and thank you.
And I'll read them from here if that'll help.
Okay, sure.
Mr. President. First of all, I don't want to do this one last, if these people are present, I would love for you to, please, Brett, are you here, if you could get with them, or Ruth, please. On behalf of the City of Gaston, I would like to commend Mr. Chapman Sturtevant and Ms. Margie Sturtevant and Mr. Calvin Hutchison and Mr. Zach Dupree for the endless hours of service dedicated to their community by serving as key holders for the Hugley Park for a combined 25-plus years. These four individuals assist with rentals, keeping the park clean and tidy, reporting any issues with the facilities, and keeping a watchful eye on the parking community. These individuals have also worked tirelessly in making sure things at the park run smoothly and remain in order for any events. Your years of service are certainly valued and we would not have been able to do it without any of you. We applaud you for your stewardship, passion, and commitment to Hugley Park and Green Pastures area as a whole. Your work has contributed to the quality of life as a whole in the City of Gaston is greatly appreciated. Are they present? Okay, well, that's okay. We got something to deliver. All right, and this is one with our own staff. Mr. President, I'll just kind of explain this, but, so when we hired Ruth Moffett, she came with a lot of experience with United Way. She was contacted by the governor's office, just out of the blue. We didn't contact them because trust me, we didn't want to lose her. They asked her to come down to Selma, Alabama after the tornadoes had hit and asked her to set up what we call VRCs, volunteer response centers, but it was quite, it's a big honor for them to ask Ruth to go down there. She went down there and helped set them up for four days, came back, and City of Gaston, we loaned her to Selma to help out, so that's something we all should be proud of. But we want to read this for her, and I'm gonna get my picture made with you, Ruth. On January 12th, 2023, there was a devastating tornado that hit the City of Selma and caused significant widespread damage. At the request of the governor and state emergency officials, our very own Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Ruth Moffett, was called upon to assist with the disaster relief. Ruth was asked to travel to Selma on January 14th to establish a disaster plan and a VRC. The VRC acts as a registration and appointment point for volunteers while coordinating requests for assistance from affected residents with the skills and resources of voluntary groups. She also created an avenue for those affected to receive monetary donations for the disaster relief through the United Way. While in Selma, she identified heavily impacted areas that were hit and informed the command team that is where they needed to set up due to a high impact. On behalf of the City of Gaston, I would like to recognize and thank Ms. Ruth Moffett for her tireless efforts and willingness to serve and assist the citizens of Selma during the crucial time. Gaston is blessed to have her many skills and talents. Thank you, Ruth.
Can we get a picture of her? Everybody?
Sure, yeah, wherever you want to take it, that'll be fine.
I don't blame you, Mayor.
Yeah, we gotta stand up to do that, don't we?
We're gonna move a little bit. We gotta move a little bit. You want me to?
Yes, sir. That's a good one. I want you to give a good sign.
Well, I don't have a good sign.
All right. Here we go. Number three, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three.
So Mayor Ford and City Councilman, thank you so much. I leaned over to Tina, I said, I feel like crying. You don't know what it's like to stand. Sometimes we take so many things for granted, and when you go with a people who have lost everything, and out of all of my years of experience in disaster, this was the worst. I went up to Beauregard where there were double-digit loss, loss of life, but Selma by far was the worst. It was very difficult and we actually, I actually went on the ground, something I don't typically do. I stay in the VRC and make sure that it's running at its best, optimal level, because that is the place that everyone comes in so that they can go out to the disaster scene. But I, but it was a need to go out on foot and to see people imagine a whole area and nothing is left. People with trees in between their house and just all matter of devastation in an area that deals with a lot of poverty. We are blessed beyond our wildest dreams, and so I'm thankful for the opportunity to go and serve because it really does make a difference. And I'm thankful for the City of Gaston, the fact that they would call, and we are recognized, I don't know if you all know this, I think it's Josh, yeah, Josh is back there. I called back here, I called Josh on Sunday evening, and I said, we don't have any forms that we need to respond to this disaster. Within five minutes, Josh had me every form from the City of Gaston. We sat at the roundtable with the mayor and all the chiefs and every form had City of Gaston on it. So what a blessing that City of Gaston was represented right there in Selma to help make a difference in their lives. So I want to thank you all for what you do. I want to thank you, Mayor, for loaning me out over the weekend. I think Mayor was on a trip when this request came through and he immediately said yes, so thank you for that. And then thank you, everyone, for everything, thing that you do. It really does make a difference. Thank you for this.
Mr. President, I just asked her one thing. I said, if you go, you are coming back. And she said, I promise. But Councilman Smith also asked me about the new logo. We are this close, hopefully by next Tuesday. We have been debating over a tail, just to let you know, whatever that means, I'm not in that area, but, so once John Moore gets with the person that we're working with, he's gonna present it to the council for a vote and give y'all options, and if you don't like it, we'll vote it down and go back to the table. But I think we've got some great ideas and it's what all other cities are doing, Huntsville, Coleman, Oxford, you name it, Tuscaloosa, they're doing it, and it'll put us going in the, in a progressive mode. But we had some great visits to Coleman and Huntsville, we talked about those, but that was fabulous to see kind of what they're doing and kind of how they divide their departments and some of the growth that they're doing and how they embrace their culture, and that's something that we're looking at too. So thank y'all for allowing us to do what we do.
Appreciate it, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Moffett, thank you for your dedication, not only to Gaston, but to the whole state of Alabama. I'm sure the people in Selma were blessed by your leadership and just your presence there, the love that you were probably exhibiting to those that were really hurting, so it means a lot. Thank you so much for being willing to go and leave your home and, and to go do that. All right, well, we'll start with council remarks. We're gonna do it a little bit different. I'm gonna start with Councilman, Councilman Smith. We're not gonna go in chronological order or even reverse chronological, we'll just have for the Holy Spirit lead, so it's led me to you.
Do you want to have some church?
Yeah, oh, by all means.
Hold on now. Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say, first of all, thank you to the mayor, Mayor Ford, his leadership and his staff, to all the department heads, thank you for all that you do on a daily basis. We really appreciate that, and certainly we want to remember the people down in South Alabama. Let's continue to keep them lifted up in our prayers. Want to just say again to Ms. Moffett, thank you so very much. She's just all over the place, so we built our new church. She was instrumental in helping us to get our ministry set up as a disaster center in case we have a storm like that, where people can come, we have showers there, we have washers and dryers, so just want to tell her thank you for helping us to get that set up in the event that we ever need it. And so also to the council, it's been a pleasure working with this council. I agree with President Beck, great thing is about to happen in the City of Gaston, and I'm excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
I don't have anything.
Skipping around, skipping, all right. Councilman Robinson.
Just, you basically said it, Councilman Smith, I mean, appreciate Mayor, appreciate everything. Article came out this past week about the plans the city has for Knockaloo Falls and it's created a lot of buzz up there in District Seven. I've gotten a lot of phone calls, a lot of people are excited, and just enjoy what's going on, and today was a great day, a lot of positive things happening. That's it, thank you. Appreciate it, everybody.
Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to start with the Greater Gaston Housing Authority. So I want to start with the Greater Gaston Housing Authority. Think—I want to thank all of those that work heavily with that entity of the city. And I think it's Executive Director Greg Price, Director of Finance Heather Rupper, Director of Operations Kelly Fowler, Public Housing Coordinator Valerie Collins Reed, Resident Initiatives Coordinator Tawana Wilson, Modernization Coordinator Scott Mayo, Section 8 Coordinator Cynthia Smith. And they do a lot of activities. They had a Christmas program, Thanksgiving program, and do a lot of things concerning after-school events, and the list goes on. So we have a newsletter that we receive, and so I wanted to highlight that. Of course, District 3 has a few of them in it, and they're always giving to those families and making sure those families are well-attended to. This past Tuesday, or last Tuesday rather, we had District 3 district meeting, and so for those city department heads and workers that came out, I want to thank you, Craig, Scott, Bobby Jackson, Scott Intrikin, Jerome Mitchell, Cliff Hurd, Billy Harris, Tina King, and I feel like I'm missing someone else, but I'm going off the sheet that you signed in. We had a great attendance. It was about 57 people that showed up, and so we do have concerns. We are on a road to growth, was the highlight of the community meeting, and so we'll be preparing to have another meeting coming up soon, and I think I have it listed for February the 7th, but we have yet to reach out to the proper department to make that happen. So let's—to make that to be announced. Stay connected to Council Larry J. Avery Facebook page, and you will get all of those announcements. One of the other announcements is that we're having a District 3 brunch forum, and that brunch forum will cover—our topics will be protecting your family's most valuable assets, with a guest speaker speaking on that. The other one is a community health fair for our seniors and veterans, and we have a sponsored office, doctor—local doctor's office that is going to be sponsoring that. The free health screening would be blood pressure, cholesterol, nutrition assessment, and bone density, and that is already posted. We'll have that facility date and time to you. And the final one that is very important to our community so that we can kind of look to par, and that's the Community Cleanup Day. Today, I'll be on the phone with our state representative that we always use with Keep Alabama Clean, Edwall Beautiful, and the other partners that we worked with before that awarded us the acknowledgement from our governor when we did our cleanup before. And so on that one, we have it listed for February, March, and April, so we would do once a month, live music, barbecue, food, and drinks, okay, with that event. Want us to—want to also give a big shout out to the MLK program that was also given as well as those that came out to the renaming of Carver Square to Ms. Francis Jelena Harris Square. Wonderful turnout for both of those events. Kudos to all those that put those events together, and again, to those family members and community members that came out. And also, wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Dudley for the morning show, sports show that he does on Monday. We had an opportunity to share on yesterday evening some things that are going on in the community, some highlights, as well as a vision forward for District 3. And so with that said, again, be—stay tuned to what is going on in District 3. We have a lot of things to announce, a lot of things that are going on, and just—we need you and want you to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a moment? I'm gonna try and take a moment. I just want to say, let me say, I was sitting here thinking—just give me a moment. I was sitting here thinking. I'm gonna say, "To God be the glory," because I was sitting here thinking that, and just the good feeling that I have about today's meeting and everything. So I'll say, "To God be the glory" for that, and echo Chris. It just feels good to be a part of what's going on in our city and to see people who work with our city being called to do great things. It feels good to be a part of that. And while I was thinking how I was gonna start by giving—I'm not gonna—how—giving honor to God, it feels good to sit amongst a president that recognizes, just that has this open to being led by the spirit of how we should do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Latham. Councilwoman Minatra.
Thank you. I just want to recognize Court Barber and all that he does for the Theater of Gaston and the Ritz Theater. I almost have a dialogue with him every day, but I just want to call attention to the Ritz and to the Theater of Gaston, because recently Broadway Birmingham announced awards, and the Theater of Gaston won eight best in 20 categories, and that put them up against, believe it or not, UAB Theater, Sanford Theater, the University of Montevallo, Opera Birmingham, and last but certainly not least, the Alabama Shakespeare Festival. So we are proud of the Ritz Theater and Theater of Gaston. Thank you.
Wow, congratulations to all those folks. I've said for years that—or decades, there's more talent per capita in Edwall County than in any county in the country, and I honestly and truly mean that. So the proof's in the pudding, and there's some of the proof right there, but the Theater of Gaston's had a long history of producing quality performances and plays right over on Wall Street. I encourage anybody that enjoys that type of thing, and even if you don't think you would, if you go in there, you will enjoy it. And thanks to the city for keeping up the building. We own that building. It's an older structure. It requires a lot of attention, but it's for a great purpose. There's anybody from the age of, what, four years old to 90 years old that participates in the productions over there, so it's a vital component of our community. Want to echo a lot of what's been said. It is really a pleasure to sit up here and serve the citizens of Gaston as a council member. It's a pleasure to serve with the mayor, like Craig Ford and his staff that has come in here with their ears pinned back to use some football jargon and are going north and south. There is no zigzagging with this Mayor Ford team, and it's very appreciated. The vision is crisp, and it's fresh, and it's bright. Gaston's future is even brighter than we can imagine, and it's—it is a real pleasure just to be a small part of that. And speaking of being bright, I attended a function Friday night. The 21 kids, Dre Kirkpatrick, Gaston's own Dre Kirkpatrick, former NFL football player. I heard him say a few things that really resonated. He's come home. He's putting his money where his mouth is. He's putting his money where his heart is, and that's in Gaston, Alabama. His organization typically focuses on youth, on children, say, birth to 18. They're now shifting to add focusing on 19-years-old and older for—basically for workforce development. So they've partnered with Gaston State Community College, Department of Education—oh, heck, it's EOC, Education—I can't remember the name of it, but it's—a—but they've partnered together, and that department will assist with getting students their GED if they need it. They will also—there's scholarships available where they can attend Gaston State at no charge. They can earn certifications and two-year degrees and be a viable component of our workforce, which is what we're seeing our mayor focus on and this council focus on. So thank you to Dre Kirkpatrick and his board of directors. Thank you, Dr. Cheryl Sington, for leading the program at Gaston State Community College. There are so many positive things going on like that in our city. Just earlier today, we had, in our pre-council meeting, Dr. Teresa Ray and Dr. Martha Lavender and Tina Gregerson came to tell us about the Challenger Program. It's a STEM program that's being done in about 24 different locations across the country. Currently, there is not one located in the state of Alabama, and we're gonna have the first one right here in Gaston. I'm talking positively about this. Hasn't happened yet, but that's where it's headed. So you have to kind of speak these things in form to happen, but a big thanks to those three ladies. They're doing this because they love children, they love students, they love Gaston. They're not getting paid to do this. They found this program, they're bringing it to Gaston, and it'll cover about a five-county area. I think some 32,000 5th through 8th graders is who their target market is. If they can expand that to high school, it would take in up to around 60-something thousand students that would come to Gaston and come to this NASA simulation-like a mission control to learn about space missions, and it's all tied in with public education for science and to get people into—students interested in those disciplines so we can have the workforce of tomorrow today. So it's things like that, people that are pouring their lives into Gaston and our citizens that are gonna take us to where we need to go, and do in large part to the leadership that we're receiving from our mayor and from his team. So it's just, again, just a pleasure to serve alongside. I appreciate so much, Councilwoman Latham, your comment, and very, very well heartfelt, and I appreciate it. It's just a pleasure to serve with these folks. Bear with us, too. We went into executive session today for the first time as a new council and mayor form. We're all kind of new at this, okay? I'm new at being the president of the council. Lucky for us, we have Ivan Nelson to guide us, who's done this for quite a few years, and also our own Lee Roberts, who serves as our city attorney. We're doing everything by the book. We're doing everything as the way the state of Alabama law requires us, and we're doing it for the common good of the citizens of Gaston. So first time we've done that, it lasted a little bit longer than we thought it would, but we had—there was good conversation, but we're doing it by the book and doing it per the laws of the state. So when we go into those, I agree with Mayor Ford. I hope we do it all the time. That means good things are about to happen in the city of Gaston. So thank you so much for your kind attention. You have one more? Yes, Councilman Smith.
I apologize, Mr. President.
No problem.
For those who live in District 2, we will meet tonight in East Gaston at the New Community Center at 6:00, and tomorrow at 6:00 at Thompson and North Gaston. So District 2 community meetings today and tomorrow, 6:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.